Okay, this concludes meeting the Hazel Plenary Commission order. First item of business is a roll call.
Blood, here.
Rinkie, here.
Wallace, here.
Azir, here.
Coleman, here.
Tru, here.
Williams, here.
Next item of business is the presentation of approval minutes in March 20, 2024.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A second. A motion and second to approve the amendments as presented, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Those opposed? Any extensions?
Yep.
Under new business, we have review of preliminary plot of lazy days estates in Central County.
Thank you. Good evening. Before use of preliminary flat for the lazy days estates to Central County and is in our area of influence. This is located south of 81st Street and east of Seneca Street. Is zone rural residential and is approximately forty-three point six one acres. Comments from area utility companies are in staff report before you. Staff is recommending the applicant address the issues listed in the comments before submitting the final plan for approval. The applicant, Mr. Austin, and the agent, Mr. Heinen with Cal Valley Engineering are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant? And I would entertain a motion if there are no comments.
I'll make a motion that we approve this preliminary flat.
We're recommending approval to Central County, right? Or are we approving?
Well, the final plot will have to come back here, so it'd be recommending approval for the preliminary plot, but the final plot will still have to come through here.
You want to amend your motion to recommend approval?
Recommend approval.
Thank you.
Preliminary plot.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval for the preliminary plot. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Those opposed? Next item of business, under old business, we have a public hearing of zoning code amendment, chapter sixteen, article three and article four. Protect the rights of all parties involved in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information. The Hazel Plenary Commission follows a specific procedure in reaching a decision, a copy is available by the door. Your attention to the procedure is appreciated. We now formally open the public hearing to consider zoning code amendment for the city of Hazel. Do any members of the Plenary Commission have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No. Have any members received any written or electronic communication on this matter?
No.
No.
Staff want to present?
So in your, before you, you should have the red line copy that shows us the changes. And there's a lot of formatting in there, so I apologize. It is a little hard to read because I've moved things around a lot. But then there should be a clean version which shows you what it would be if approved and recommended to council for approval. So on the staff report, Article Three updates to Section 303 regulations, all districts. It did add Section I, which is setbacks, and this was just some repetitive language that was throughout, that I moved up here to not have to keep repeating it in each district. Added Section J for maximum height structure. This is to kind of restrict wind farms, because it's not something we want to see right outside of town or in town. So that's what that was for. F is not actually an addition. I know it showed up in red. I just removed some of the wording, but that was already there. On Article Four, Sections 401 through, I'm sorry, added Section 304 accessory use and structures. This is the same thing. There's a lot of language that was repetitive through each district, so I took that bulk part of accessory uses and put it up there. Then listed out locations for accessory uses where they could be either rear or side yard, and then only just put the setback in the district, if that makes sense. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Article Four zoning districts. So in the SF-15, single-family suburban residential district, added accessory use and structure C, added the reference to 304. I did that throughout, so I'm not going to keep repeating that, but that is on every item. Reduce accessory setback from rear side yard from five to three. I did this throughout as well on each district. And then just rearranging some of the verbiage so that it's the same throughout with, sorry, the bulk regulations, lot size requirements, setbacks, trying to kind of keep it all going the same, and then parking and if there's landscaping requirement, so.
You took all rear yards from five to three, is that what I heard?
Yes.
And that would only really apply if there's no existing drainage utility, even if backed a lot?
Correct, because up under accessory, it says it can't be on a platted easement or block drainage. Under an accessory such accessory structure definition, it says it can't be on a platted easement or block drainage. So a pool is still five feet. That is under the building code, that is different. Pool still has to be five feet off of.
That's what my concern was, and there's if that can't work for someone, there is a mechanism to go out and get part of that.
A variance.
A variance, yes.
Yep. About a pool separate, it's in the building code, it says five feet, so a pool is not three, it would be five. But as far as a shed or anything like that, as long as it's not on a platted easement or going to block any drainage, that would, then it would be fine. So going back to SF-15, single-family, same thing, I told you that I wasn't going to go over. Reduce the maximum height of a structure from forty-five to thirty-five feet, and then added a minimum block width of fifty and added a minimum lot depth of ninety. Previously, there wasn't any lot depth or width. It was just six thousand, six thousand square feet minimum. If that's something you guys want to see increase or decrease, just let me know. SF zero, which is single-family, zero lot line, same thing with the accessory structures. Reduce the minimum lot width. This one was in here, and this is where I was trying to make everything the same throughout, because some of them had lot widths and depths, or they didn't. So trying to make sure everything has the same. This one I reduced from fifty to forty and ninety to eighty, and that's up for discussion. I looked at some other cities. If you guys don't want them to be that small, now's the time to tell me. I'm not against it. It was just a suggestion that I had.
George, which page are you on?
So I'm actually reading off the staff report.
Okay.
But if you want to look, if you're looking at the clean line.
It's thirty-nine on the.
Okay.
So I'm under SFZ, single-family, zero lot line. So under C there, it says lot size requirements. That's where it says the minimum lot size for a zero lot line would be five thousand square feet. Minimum lot is forty and minimum lot depth eighty. If you guys want to keep those at fifty and ninety, I, I'm fine with that, too. Any comments, or you want me to keep moving on, and we can come back to that?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking through height. Thirty-five, I mean, we've got some two-story houses, mine being one of them, that by the time you get a peak, it's probably close to thirty or above, because I have three-foot trusses in the middle, too.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm sure I'm finding on grandfathered in, but I don't want to create an issue for somebody else. You know, two-story house shouldn't be that restrictive.
On single-family?
Yeah.
Okay.
But without taking it individually with plans that's to come in, there's a mechanism there for allowing it to go to thirty-six or whatever it may be.
Yeah, but if you want to not be so restrictive and leave it at forty-five, we can. I think this is.
I don't love forty-five either. I'm just worried that thirty-five is cutting it too close.
We, we could go with forty-two.
What, what was the reason to reduce it?
Just trying to keep uniform through a single-family residential and not having, you know, one house be two stories higher. I guess I say two stories is probably exaggerating, but you'll notice I changed it for two-family and MF4 so that they blend in easier with the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, those are, what are the new ones over in Copper Tail?
I actually don't know. I meant to look at that.
Okay.
Because those are a little bit taller.
Yeah, let's leave it where it's at for now.
Okay, so, single-family residential, which is SF, we're going to leave it thirty-five.
Yeah.
Okay. Lot width and depth, you guys are good with that? The fifty and ninety?
Fifty and ninety?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So, single-family, zero lot line, so that one, I believe height was already set on that. I did not change it, so maximum structure of a height on that one is going to be thirty-five. Most likely, those are going to be single-story, I mean, most likely, so, okay. And then lot depth and lot width is forty and eighty. It was fifty and ninety. So if you want to leave it at the fifty and ninety, we can. Still the five thousand minimum lot square footage, so they do, I mean, that's just the minimum. It could be sixty. You just have to meet that minimum square footage.
Yeah, forty feet just seems really small to me. I'm okay with leaving the eighty-foot depth if we have fifty-foot width.
Okay.
And you still got a five thousand minimum requirement regardless, so.
Yep. Okay, so we're only going to reduce the lot depth from ninety to eighty, and we're going to leave the lot width at fifty.
Unless there's other discussion that feels like forty is.
It's okay, I'm the main person that worked on this, so I'm open to suggestion, so. Added side yard setback, that on the zero setback side, no windows or doors are allowed. And then, under general conditions, on the setback, side setback, exterior materials must be constructed with a fire rate of materials for two hours. And I think part of this comes from building code and can be a little bit more in-depth, but they still do have to maintain ten feet between structures.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about. Okay.
Good with that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Tiny homes, all I did was add the accessory use and structures, see Section 304. That was recently put in here. I didn't do a whole lot of work on that, and we don't currently, I haven't had anybody approach me on that one, so. Section 405, two-family residential, minimum lot width to fifty, minimum lot depth to ninety, and then reduced maximum height structure forty-five feet to thirty-five. Want to leave that one?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Okay. MF4, added minimum lot width fifty, minimum lot depth ninety, and then forty-five to thirty-five, same thing with those. Okay. MFA, lot width fifty, lot depth ninety, maximum height of structure is fifty-five.
Is that what it was before?
It was not in there. So that was an addition of putting that in there.
Think I'm okay with that.
That was MFA.
So if I, there's a, the apartments behind five, or that's apartments, right?
Yes.
If I wanted to do that again, I wanted to build a high-rise apartment?
So they would just have to apply for a variant to go against that?
Okay.
Or?
I don't think we're going to get a whole lot of five-story structures, but.
And if you don't want to put a maximum height structure, maximum height structure on that, we don't have to, since it's apartments?
Well, no, I, I think I'm fine where it's at. If, if it's going to go through a zone change, you can change to apartments, that conversation is going to happen there. It's, I don't, I don't.
Conditional use could be applied for.
Yeah.
Okay. Section 408, manufactured home parks or manufactured home district. This one I'm going to be revisiting. All I did was add the accessory use and then the setbacks for those. This one needs a little bit more work, and it's going to take a little longer. So this one's going to come back again before you guys, but at this time, I don't have any more changes for that one.
So another public hearing?
Eventually, yes. I don't have anybody looking at one of those, but that, that section's, yeah.
If it needs more work, that's fine.
Four oh nine.
It's not worth loading up everything else.
Um, four oh nine hotel motel, lot width, lot depth, and setback was added. I think that's all on that one. Anybody have any questions on those? Four-ten, office commercial district, same thing with this. I added the minimum lot, minimum lot depth, removed the hours of operation, accessory setback. This one I'm going to be looking at again, too. I'm not really sure if we need this office commercial district. It will probably be one that I maybe look at, looking at what's all in here and moving it with light commercial. I don't really see the need for having two different, but at this time, I'm going to leave it in there. Listen, anybody has any feedback on that?
Well, you said you remove the hours of operation. Maybe that's the only difference between the two.
Yeah, I'm not, this has been in there for a long time, so I'm not really sure. It may just be a little bit outdated, so. LI, light commercial, so with this, they added the minimum lot width, depth, maximum height structure of forty-five. Reduce the accessory setback from five to three, and then the use limitations. And this is probably the biggest part that we need to pay attention to. Some of these are in here, but this is where I'm trying to maybe control a little bit of the outdoor storage on commercial use, kind of avoid some of the problems that we have. So if anybody has any questions on these, so. Number one is no outdoor storage is permitted except for display of goods for sale as temporary use, no more than forty-five days, except as otherwise allowed or approved in accordance with these regulations. Number two, merchandise that is for sale may be displayed in areas immediately adjacent to the building. No required off-street parking or loading area shall be utilized for storage or display of vehicles or items for sale. Storage cell occur within a solid screened area and shall not be visible from any adjacent non-elevated street, nor from ground level view in any adjacent lot, except as otherwise allowed or approved in accordance with these regulations. And on this one right here, under the use chart, there is some, some conditions on some, that state items over there, to like, for instance, car sales would be allowed still. Number, that numbering is wrong right there. There shall be no manufacturer compounding, processing, or treatment of products other than which is clearly incidental and essential to retail store or business, and where all such products are customary sold at retail on the premises. That was already there. Number ten was already there. Number eleven was already there. Does anybody have any questions on those?
What about the seasonal sales of like plants in the summer and things like that?
So the, number one, the no outdoor storage is permitted except for display of goods for sale as temporary use, no more than forty-five days, would be covered by that.
So if they want to go more than forty-five days, say for the whole summer to sell plants, that's a conditional use?
Except as otherwise allowed or approved in accordance with these regulations. So that would be a use, I think, that could be allowed especially for its outdoor sales, so. Or if it's immediately adjacent to the building, it would be allowed to. So nifty-thrifty is one, that they have stuff for sale on the sidewalk outside. Sometimes they don't have it out year-round. True Value has stuff immediately outside the sidewalk.
That's the one I was thinking of.
Yep. And True Value does talk to us and keep, occasionally they have extra mulch or stuff for sale that's allowed out.
When they buy it in bulk and beginning of season.
So they typically have stuff sitting outside year-round, though?
On the sidewalk adjacent to the building. So that's covered by.
Yeah, he's talking about the parking lot.
Yeah.
Stalls and pallets that are out on the far end of the parking lot, that is strictly prohibited in what you just read. Unless you get into the number of required stalls for the square footage of the building, and somehow it's exempt because those are extra.
Except as otherwise allowed or proven in accordance with these regulations. I could put with these regulations or zoning approval, I could add that on there on number one.
I think there are time limits appropriate, and I think we just need to have some control over it.
Okay. So with number one, we could add otherwise allowed or approved in accordance with these regulations or the zoning administrator?
Yeah. And how would that be done? Would that be through a variance or permit or?
Through staff. They would contact us about it, just like True Value did for that outdoor storage for that mulch.
Okay.
Anybody have any more questions with that? Okay, so, heavy commercial, same thing, minimum lot size, I believe that was there. Height of the structure fifty-five, lot width and depth fifty and ninety, and then the use limitations. So this one should be a little bit less. Number one, I will add that on the zoning admin approval. Number two, three is the same. Four, business activities or storage shall occur within fully enclosed structures or solid screened areas. Number five, there, that was already there. Six was there, and seven was there. Any questions, comments? Something you want changed?
No more questions for staff at this time?
Will these updates be sent out to businesses?
Um, so the thing with this is.
Yeah, I'll just.
Yeah, so this won't apply to any business that's currently in operations now.
Okay.
So this will apply going forward to anybody that new starts a business, so. So four thirteen is light industrial, same thing with the lot width and depth, use limitations. This one's going a little bit less restrictive, except for the outdoor storage is kind of the main thing that we've added in here. And then illumination is on there for number six. And same thing for heavy industrial. I believe these both are pretty close to the same thing, just a lot width and depth is the difference.
So E three on the heavy items stored outside should not be visible?
Same thing as everything else?
Tell me where you're at?
E three on the heavy?
Okay.
Heavy industrial?
No required off-street parking?
No, items stored outdoors will not be visible from any adjacent non-elevated street.
Are you on light industrial? I'm sorry.
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial. Here we go. Items stored outdoors should not be visible from any adjacent non-elevated street, okay.
Does that need to be in there for heavy? Because I mean, you're not going to park a trash truck behind a fence that's high enough to hide it.
I mean, I guess it depends, depends on what you want for that. If you want outdoor storage possibly viewable from the road, just depends.
Heavy industrial is the most intense use, right? At some point, we have to have a place to store things outside.
Right.
There's no other place in the code to be able to do it. And I, I agree that screening should be attempted at least and do the best we can, but your point is well-made. It's pretty hard to screen a trash truck, no matter what you do, or a crane, or.
Semi-trailer.
Backhoes.
Yeah.
I think if I was going to allow it, heavy industrial would be the place to do it.
To not have screen?
Well, to.
Oh.
Limit the screen.
Okay.
I was also thinking about equipment rental. I think Hazel has an equipment rental place. I haven't been there personally, but I imagine they have, you know, backhoes and skid steers and stuff like that that wouldn't be stored inside. They'd probably be light commercial.
But outdoor storage comes as a conditional use for them?
Yes. Outdoor storage is.
That gives us an individual case to be able to go look at a property specifically where it's at and guide the screening and lighting and all of that on an individual basis, instead of as a full land use, or as long as you're zoned correctly, there's no other regulations other than what's in the code.
Okay. And I don't think they're sound heavy, like they're light.
I think they're light.
Yeah.
And then, and theirs would be not exactly storage, it would be equipment for rental that you could see, but it wouldn't be material storage, I guess, is a little bit, I think, difference there.
So would it fall under products then for sale?
Well, they're not for sale.
Next covered by this as well.
I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't consider them being stored if they're being rented. There'd be fine fenced area, but you do make a good point with that. But outdoor storage are, all of them are conditional use now, so they would have to come before and there would be, I mean, screening requirements and looked at if it's a ten-foot fence or something.
Well, maybe that's a better way to handle heavy industrial, too. The screening requirements for a crane are different than.
A skid steer.
Yeah, a skid steer. So we can do case by case based, based on actual location when it comes in to more right-size what that looks like, instead of.
Yeah, so does it need to be stated in there maybe differently?
Yeah, I think I would leave it.
Leave it in there?
I think so.
And I was trying not to be too restrictive on these, but also tried to prevent, you know, not being everything viewable from the road or adjacent property.
Yeah.
So the rental place would be grand older?
They already have a conditional use permit, so.
Yeah, so anything that is there right now, this doesn't apply to them. But if somebody comes and asks us for a business license and what they're going to have to do for this property, they're going to have to have screening for their property. Just like the one that's going over on Kerner right now, it has screening going up, so.
So if somebody wanted to do like last meeting with the RV storage.
They would put RV storage on Broadway, they would come to us as a conditional use, and we could.
Yeah, even if it's.
Individually look at what that looks like.
Even if it's heavy industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to change something in that sentence, I mean, I'm open to discussion, now's the time to do it, so.
I, I think it makes sense the way we have it now. We're pretty sensitive to outdoor storage, so this gives us the most ability to right-size the solution.
Okay. I think that's all the changes I have in here, unless you guys have questions on anything else.
Any more questions for staff before we move on? Now it's time for a member of the public to speak. Please keep your time to five minutes. You are here to speak?
I'm here to listen.
Okay. Are you Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Okay. So your comments are in the staff report.
Okay.
Seeing no others, public comment is now closed for the commission actions, and the floor is open to commission comments. Any other discussion? General questions about five minutes? And I would entertain a motion. I will move that we adjourn. We can't do that.
And so the motion needs to be with the discussed changes.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to adopt the recommended amendments to the zoning code and forward the recommendation of approval to city council. Is that the correct one?
With.
With the discussed changes.
With suggested changes, discussed, however you want to do that.
Said adopt recommended amendments, I thought that's what.
Yeah, but then.
Changes to the amendments.
We had changes that we discussed tonight that wouldn't have been.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to adopt with the changes discussed here tonight. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye aye.
Those opposed? No correspondence?
None.
None.
No offer agenda?
None.
I don't make. Now you can make a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, everybody.